All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have a silent moment of prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you will, please stand with me. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business is to conduct roll call. Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
Present.
Commissioner Gal Hambrick.
Present.
Commissioner Sana Gregory. Commissioner Demont Davis. All right, Madam Clerk, presently, so we do have a quorum with Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Hambrick, and myself, and hopefully the others will be joining us soon.
Commissioner Davis is walking in.
I am.
Please show Commissioner Davis present.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to May 4th, 2021 Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Any commissioners have any amendments?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Commissioner Franklin, and you're a little distorted.
I'm in here, so I don't know why it's distorted, but I don't know what you want. But let me just say this, I have quite a few items I would like for us to take separately.
We're having a hard time understanding you.
Okay. I'll see if we need to come to the conference room then.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Yeah, while we're waiting on that, can I just say, you know, one thing I would like to have taken on, put on the regular agenda?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, I would like number 13, which is Resolution 2021-88, global music rights to be put on the regular agenda.
All right, motions for us to go on for 2021-88 to go on to the regular agenda, is there a second? How second the motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Okay, can we try this again? I have IT in here, can everybody hear me clearly?
No.
That's a little better, go ahead and try it.
Okay. Items 17 and 18 I would like to have placed on the regular agenda.
Was that items 14 and 18? 14 and 17? 17 and 18?
Yes.
All right, if I heard right, Commissioner Franklin's motion is to place Resolution 2021-92, authorize Clayton County to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Arts Clayton to create a framework of cooperation with Clayton County's IT department. And Resolution 2021-93, resolution authorizing Clayton County enter into a governmental agreement with the Tourism Authority with the IT department. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
All right, probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous.
All right, next I would like to take also item 20 and 20, 21 and 22, as well as 23, and place it on the regular agenda. I really would like to hold item 22, but we'll place it on the regular agenda for now.
Okay, so if I heard you correct, your motion is for items 21, 22, and 23. 21's Resolution 2021-96 to amend Resolution 2021-85 by changing the resolution number from 2021-85 to 2021-96. All right, then item 22 is ordinance 21, 2021-97 to amend civil service rules and regulations as amended specifically to amend rules 11.302. And item number 23 is ordinance 2021-98 to amend civil service, Clayton County Civil Service Rules and Regulations as amended specifically to delete Rule Appendix A, Police Department Promotional Procedures. Is there a second to this motion?
Okay.
Was there a second to the motion? All right, well, that motion to place it on the regular agenda fails due to the lack of a second. Do you have any others, Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, sir, I just, if I may have a point of privilege, I believe that these items need to be done within our, not just asking, do we have questions? But when we're making major changes, we need to have a presentation and not just add it to the consent agenda. I have concern about quite a few items with a lot of parts to them added to the consent agenda, so I'll just bring it to this board attention. I will be very before the board that we, if we can't do what we need to do, then we need to reconsider the consent agenda. Everything on these agendas should be explained to the people as well as to us in detail. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. There being no further, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll make the second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous? Madam Clerk.
Our first, next item of business is the veteran of the month, senior services.
All right, this month we have the honor and the privilege to recognize and to thank Specialist Gary Phambro. Gary Phambro joined the U.S. Army under the Delay Entry Program, one year after graduating. He never regretted joining the U.S. Army. In 1980, Mr. Phambro received a certificate of training for the Head Start German Orientation Program on April 16th, and a certificate of achievement for hard work and dedication for the E-Troupe First Squadron, 10th United States Cavalry on September 16th. He also completed a preliminary leadership program for the 8th Infantry Division from the Non-Commissioned Officers Academy. His rank in the U.S. Army was a Specialist Five and was last stationed in Fort Jackson, South Carolina. Gary is an active member of Union Grove Baptist Church in Union City, Georgia. Mr. Phambro proudly serves as a, as Vice President of the Mission Ministry, which is a rewarding and humbling experience serving the underprivileged and homeless. He is a Sunday School Leader and a member of the Bread Ministry and Transportation Ministry. Currently, Gary works for the City of Riverdale Cultural Affairs Department and enjoys working with various veteran programs throughout the year. Please help me acknowledge and congratulate Specialist Gary Phambro. I'm hoping he is tuned in to us, so we can definitely let him know we appreciate your service, sir, and all that you are doing within the community of Clayton County and around the surrounding areas. Thank you so much, sir. Madam Clerk, Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, I'm sure he is watching because Mr. Gary told me about this a couple of weeks ago, he was so excited. He's one of the most dedicated workers that they have at the City of Riverdale, and I have the privilege of working with them probably for the past 10 years when I was working with Riverdale on their, their shows. He is a wonderful soldier, so congratulations again.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Would you also recognize, I'm here, sir?
All right, Commissioner Sana Gregory has joined us, Madam Clerk, so please let the record reflect some.
Our next item is Clayton County observes May 2021 as Older Americans Month. Chairman, turn.
I don't see Tori or anybody present, so we will just have the reading of the proclamation. Is the proclamation up front? That's fine. Ms. CEO, why don't you hold the proclamation while she reads it? Thank you, sir. No, he's a, he's a proud member of the senior center as well.
Clayton County observes May 2021 as Older Americans Month. Whereas Clayton County includes a community of older Americans who make countless contributions to our community every day. And whereas Clayton County Senior Services is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. And whereas Clayton County Senior Services recognizes the importance of bringing all generations together and engaging in activities that promote the physical, mental, social, and emotional well-being of all. And whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, concerning people with opportunities to share their time, experience, and talents. And whereas Clayton County Senior Services Department is joined by community partners Kaiser Permanente, Anthem Humana, Southern Regional Medical Center, and Gen Care Senior Medical Center to sponsor the annual May Fest event, which is the largest celebration in metro Atlanta with over 1,200 seniors in attendance, and honors Older Americans Month. This year's theme, Communities of Strength, encourages seniors to celebrate the resilience and strength built over their lives through successes, failures, joys, and difficulties. It's these stories that help support and inspire others. The purpose of May Fest is to honor Clayton County senior population and recognize how much they are loved, celebrated, and appreciated. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Older Americans Month in Clayton County, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to take the time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this day of May in the year 202021.
Let me say this, and I definitely proudly say this wherever I go, about our seniors. We have the greatest, funnest, liveliest seniors anywhere in the state, if not in the nation, and I'm so proud to serve them here in our community. They deserve the very best, and that's why we strive to make sure that we provide the best services and facilities as well as programs for our seniors here in Clayton County. All right, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes, a maximum time limit, to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any despairing remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Mr. Garber.
Mr. Chairman, may I remove my mask?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, Ms. James, Nikki Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. The topic of my conversation today is garbage, litter, and trash. My love of God is only equal to my love of man. My love of God and man is only equal to my love of my county, my state, and my country. I am never surprised by evil, nor am I paralyzed by despair. We can't put the blame for garbage, litter, and trash on you, meaning my commissioners. We have to put the blame on all of us. We cannot legislate good behavior, we have to teach good behavior. Let's reason together. We are not adversaries, but brothers and sisters, and let us live in this land in peace and cleanliness. Respectfully, I ask that the commissioners, all of the commissioners unanimously reinstate Clayton clean and beautiful. It's not how you can help me, it's more how we can help each other. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board will now approve consent items 1 through 12, 14 through 16, 19 through 24.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick, are there any questions about any other items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
The first item is item number 13, which is Resolution 2021-88, resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a music license agreement with Global Music Rights LLC.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I have Resolution 2021-88, which is the resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a music license agreement with Global Music Rights LLC, to authorize the Chairman on his designate to execute the agreement and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to authorize a chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like an explanation of this. What, what does it mean and what does it do for, I guess, Parks and Rec? How, how is it activated and new does it and everything about it?
Well, simply put, Commissioner Hambrick, it's my understanding that when we play music by artists, this gives us the right to do so. Play music, recorded music. So if we play a song by, I don't know, Mary J. Blige, then if we're playing that and they open at an event, a concert or something, then we would have the right to do so by passing this ordinance.
Okay. May I speak on that as an artist, please, if you don't mind?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, mainly what it is, is that you can play anything you want as a performance. The problem is, is that we actually share that content. So whenever you begin to share it, whether it's via social media, or if we're sharing it through CCTV, then that's what triggers for us to have to have those rights in order to be able to share the music. But if somebody wanted to sing a song or perform a song, you can play it or perform it, but it's the sharing aspect of it that triggers you having to have the rights to be able to share that particular music.
That's correct. Thank you for that further clarification, Commissioner Franklin.
My pleasure.
Any other questions you might have, Commissioner Hambrick?
No, that, that's all. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
The next item is item number 17, Resolution 2021-92, resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Arts Clayton.
Do you want me to take 92 and 93 together, or do you want me to?
Let's take them separate.
Okay. So first is Resolution 2021-92, is the resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a MOU, remember, sorry, memorandum of understanding with Arts Clayton to create a framework of cooperation between Clayton County's Department of Information Technology and Arts Clayton to provide technology support services, to authorize the Chairman on his designate to execute any documents and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
All right, Commissioner Davis made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Franklin?
It's my understanding when we dial up the, the office now, they're already receiving support, technol, technology support, because they're currently on the county system. But my question here is, I don't mind lending support, let me say that, because I don't want anyone to go back and misconstrue what I am saying. I don't mind lending support. However, both of these organizations are organizations which are, can you hear me?
Yes.
Which are tasked with exposing our county even further and bringing additional funds to our county. When I look at joining counties and jurisdictions, they use their funds in a very robust and innovative way to continue to promote the county. However, in Clayton County, what I notice is particularly, I don't know about the other commissioners, but when we do events, and particularly when I've asked in the past for Arts Clayton to do what other jurisdictions do in helping to bring artists and folks to the county, we end up having to go out of five spots on our own. So again, I don't mind supporting this effort, but I think two things need to happen. Number one, I need to understand exactly how the funds are being used to increase our revenues in Clayton County out of both of these organizations, that's number one. Last would be the things that they've completely thought of a smaller sector folks, especially if we're going to continue to support them with technology, that's number two. And number three, what is going to be the cost to our county providing this technology, what's the liability considering that both of these organizations have been operating without the support up until now. So for me, those are my concerns, and I really wish we could kind of table it to really understand how we can make this a win-win situation. Too often we want to make change in our community, but we don't want to go to the resources and hold them accountable to make sure that they're delivering on helping to make us even a, well-known in a better county. And I'm ready for a vote, depending on what the board wants to do.
Any other questions? All right, well, we have a motion and a second, barring no other questions, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, because there's not enough information. I believe that we're getting ahead of ourselves. I believe there's room for us to have a discussion again to make it a win-win, so that our citizens are getting a return on our investment.
All right, motion, motion passed four to one.
The next item is Resolution 2021-93.
Next resolution is 2021-93, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Tourism Authority of Clayton County to provide technical support services to the Tourism Authority staff, to authorize the Chairman on his designate to execute any documents and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, that was me on that one, I forgot.
Four to one, Madam Clerk, with Commissioner Franklin opposing.
The next item of board appointments.
Okay, first board appointment this evening is for the MARTA Citizen Advisory Board. This appointment's for the AFL-CIO appointment is for four years, hold on a second, four members on the board are different organizations, this is being one of the four. Appointment is from the American Federation of Labor and Congress Industry Organizations, and I believe, Mr. Reed, it's a two-year appointment, correct? This is a two-year appointment. Speaking to the president of the association, he's recommending Sherika Cook Thomas, and I offer that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved to second, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Is she unanimous? Next board appointment is also to the MARTA Citizen Advisory Board, this is Commissioner Hambrick's selection, this is a two-year appointment. Commissioner Hambrick?
Yes, Mr. Chair, can you take that off? And until I'm ready, and I will let the clerk know, because I'm trying to explain to some of the folk that I've checked with, and I'm not clear on what they do and how it's different from the other board.
Okay, if you would, I'm sorry, if you would like to either direct on myself or CEO, we can help with some of that clarification in terms of what their responsibilities are.
Okay, I'll get with you all, but I would like for that to be taken off until I contact the clerk or to.
You're clear on that, Madam Clerk? Yes, ma'am, you're clear on that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next board appointment is to MARTA Citizen Advisory Board. This appointment is for ex-official member. This member comes from the Chamber of Commerce. The sitting president or the CEO of the Chamber is the appointee. The current president is Ms. Valencia Williams, I think that should be Williamson, is it correct? Yes, Williamson. I've placed that in form of motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is she unanimous? Next board appointment is the Green Space Program Board, Commissioner Davis's selection. This is one that was held over, and I believe it's a four-year appointment. Mr. Commissioner Davis, you have an?
Yes, I'd like to point Ms. Alexis Lee to the Land Bank, to the board.
Alexis Lee?
Yes.
To the Green Space?
Green Space Board, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, those, I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye.
A question, sir, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Question is, a centime ago, we put in place that each board had to have a representative from the various districts, and it's my understanding that this was one of the boards, I don't remember us going back to reallocate those board members to ensure that all districts were represented, and I may be wrong, I just want to double check, because I believe even with Mr. King coming off, there were with yourself, Commissioner Davis, that both are in District Four, and with Commissioner Davis being able to give this appointment, it gives us three people in District Four. So I guess I need to ask the clerk to provide clarification on how many people on this board, how many from each district, and are they properly represented, based upon what was passed by the majority of our board from various districts?
Okay, well, we, you will, please get with the clerk on that, we're going to move forward on this, and then if it needs to be rectified, then we'll come back and do so. But yes, every, every.
I don't think we're going to be aligned with our own code and resolution that we passed.
Is it a code that says, I'm sorry, that code says that every district knowingly, or because it might be unintentional, that there's people selected? But my, my selection can come from anywhere.
That's correct, there isn't a, there isn't a, this board passed a resolution that stated that for certain boards of a certain size, that you all would do it on a, to make sure that each of all, you all had a appointee, but there isn't a requirement that the person who is appointed has to be from each district, it just has to be an appointee from wherever you all decide.
Whoever's making the appointment.
That's correct.
Each five commissioner has an individual selection to the Land Bank Board.
My question is, this one, this was the, this was the crest of where this came forward, Mr. Chairman.
Say that again. Say that again.
I'm sorry, this was the crest of where it came forward, was this particular board itself. And I will ask respectfully that, so that we can ensure that we're in compliance, especially if we know that we've gotten this clarification, that we hold this item, to ensure that we're going in the direction that the majority of the board voted for us to go in. And therefore, I'd like to put this particular board. Therefore, I don't think that this particular board has a vote from each board member.
From what I can understand, Madam Clerk, she's saying that she does not believe that every board member had a selection. Is this one of the boards that we have two selections or one on?
No, I'm asking them if they would give me the backup, because I don't have the backup so I can look at it and see how many are on this board. Because this is a new board, and only two people had put some on there with the two of you all at first.
I go to the majority of this board's vote, but again...
Yeah, this is the Green Space Board. There's only, was it three or five?
Right. Okay, it says that there are two standing members, Chairman and Vice Chairman of the Board. That's the two of you all, and then there are four members at large appointed by the Board of Commissioners. So the only two people on here right now is Mr. Kenny and Libby Torbush.
And you... Well, Ms. Torbush resigned. No, no, she's still on there.
She's still on there. Those are the only two.
Mr. Kenny resigned, and the other two have not been appointed?
That's it.
And the vice chair seat has to rotate, so now Commissioner...
Okay, so my seat, the vice chair...
Commissioner Gregory would be...
Commissioner Gregory.
Would be on this board.
Thornbush, and then one other.
Mr. Kenny.
Okay, so should this, should this appointment be at large, or should...
They will be at large. There are only four members on this board.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Hambrick?
Yes, now, are we talking about the Green Space Board or are we talking about the Land Bank Board?
Green Space.
Green Space.
Okay, somebody mentioned Land Bank, okay.
I misquoted. I apologize, Commissioner Hambrick.
This is for the Green Space. So your selection, Commissioner Davis, is at large.
Okay.
Your appointment, and you made your recommendation.
I have.
I second the motion. Are there any other questions?
I do once again appeal to this board, considering we have green space in each one of our districts, that we consider that each district is represented, because this, again, was the crest of what brought forth that resolution.
Well, and I hear you loud and clear, but also since I'm covering the whole county and I'm part of the District Three county, I would represent District Three as well. So your point is duly noted.
Ms., one, the other appointee is from Hampton, Georgia.
Oh, there is one from Hampton?
Yes.
Thorn, who is that, Thornbush?
Ms. Thornbush is from Hampton, and I don't know where Ms. Lee is from. Alexis Lee.
She's in District Four.
She's in District Four.
Okay, so we do, I believe, have one from District Three. Ms. Thornbush is from District Three. But at any rate, we've made a motion and seconded the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Nay.
Four to one, Commissioner Franklin.
Because not enough information, we need to ensure each district is represented. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next board appointment is to the Land Bank Board, that's at large. Ms. Marie Grisby resigned from the Land Bank Board. Appointment will begin immediately and will expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Any recommendations? I would like to recommend Ms. Tanya Lane. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second. Any questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Housing Authority. This is Commissioner Franklin's appointee. Ms. Jocelyn Lee has resigned from the Housing Authority Board, and the appointment will begin immediately and will expire December first, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Franklin?
Yes, first, I would like to thank Ms. Jocelyn Lee for her level of service and amazing level of professionalism and intelligence that she brought to this board and experience. But with that being stated, I would also like to appoint or recommend, I mean, Ms. Hilda Reeves, Hilda Reeves, to serve on this board to twenty twenty-four.
Clear on that name, Madam Clerk?
Hilda Reeves?
H-I-L-T-A-R-E-E-V-E-S.
Okay. All right, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Mr. Reed?
Yes, executive session on a litigation only.
All right, there's a motion going to the executive session for litigation. I will make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. All right, let's have roll call. Commissioner Sana Gregory?
I'm here, sir.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick?
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin? All right, let the record reflect that I believe everybody's here except for Commissioner Franklin. Motion to reconvene.
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Mr. Reed?
Would you like to maybe take them together?
Please.
Okay. First is a settlement agreement relating to Kevin Kruger and releasing the county Ava Shawk and Jessica Conlon relating to an accident that occurred on July nineteenth, twenty nineteen, at or near the intersection of Terra Boulevard and North Main Street in Clayton County, Georgia, and this is in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. The second is relating to Georgine Wagner, G-E-O-R-G-I-E-N-E, and the releases are Johnny Kent in Clayton County in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars relating to an automobile accident and collision which occurred on or around January twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, and also asking the Chief Financial Officer to, or authorizing Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget to reflect their appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous. Have a good evening. God bless.